Sorry, you couldn't find what, the meeting?
Check.
Oh, the budget, this, the current fiscal year budget?
The new one proposed, is there any numbers yet?
The budget hasn't been proposed. This is a public input session in advance of a budget being proposed. As part of the town charter, I'm required to deliver the budget to the town council at the beginning of March.
Yep. No, we sponsored this workshop just to give people an opportunity to come and if they had thoughts or suggestions or ideas, to share those with us before the budget process really starts. It's certainly much better to get input from people at the beginning of the process because by the time we boil it all down and try and make changes at the end, it becomes much more difficult.
You want me up here?
Yes, please come, come to the podium. Let us know your name and address, please.
Yeah, Framon Road, Gray, Route 100. So, we seem to be hiring quite a few people. And so, that money was not in this current year's budget. So, I'm wondering, where did the money come from? I want to know what's going on with the TIFs, the balances, you know, because economic development is supposedly paid out of that. Is there enough coming into the TIF each year to cover the expenses of the economic department? You know, so it's all related into balances and what kind of money is being used. So, that's basically what I need to know.
We're not going to be able to provide you with the answers now. I'd appreciate it if you-
No, I'm, I, that, for the next, whenever you have another meeting, yeah.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was just gonna ask you if you'd send me an email with a list of questions that you have. That would be helpful. Because I know you want pretty specific information. I want to make sure I get it right.
May I add just one comment?
Yes.
Yeah, I just, the positions that we've hired for this year have, were budgeted as part of FY25 budget.
Absolutely. Yeah. This current budget?
Yes, yeah. We haven't hired any positions that weren't budgeted this fiscal year.
Correct. The, um, this new technical person wasn't in the budget, taking care of the programming, the programming person, and the, I'll have to take a look. I don't, I didn't think that that was in there.
We had a position to help here with the presentation of video and recorded sessions for the council planning board, school board, et cetera. We had trouble, if you remember, finding a position for that and we entered into an agreement with New Gloucester to share a position. So, that's kind of, it has been a bumpy road to get to the point where we are now.
I'll have to examine the last year's budget then. Okay.
And by all-
I do, of course-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, on the TIFs. We should have an accountability of the TIFs. What's all of the TIFs that we have and the annual income coming into it and what we're expending from it and, yep.
I would agree.
So, a summary, yep. I mean, an actual in and out, yep.
Yep. And I'll just take the opportunity that anybody that might be online, I don't think there is anyone except for Councilor Johnson. But this isn't the last opportunity for people to have input, obviously. If, you know, you're eating dinner tomorrow evening and you're struck by some idea, it can be shared with us, any of us, via email. We're easy to get a hold of. And I do appreciate and we do respond to all of those inquiries that we get from people. So, I'll just put that out there too. Yes, please come to the microphone. Let us know your name and your address, please.
Hi, Bob Coleman, 15 Daihei Road in Gray. I know how monumental of a task it is every year to come up with a, with a budget, a balanced budget, so to speak. And I appreciate the opportunity to, just to come and express. Last year, I came at the 11th hour and kind of whined about the budget and complained and I felt like it was important to come early in the process this year. I guess the only thing I would say, a couple of things. All of the challenges, if you will, that we as a town will face with higher expenses, those same expenses, very similar kinds of expenses are affecting all of the families that live in Gray. And I'm really concerned about young families in particular that are really struggling and they don't have a place to go to ask for more money. They can't go to the public and say, hey, can you give us more money because things cost more? They have to suck it up and deal with it. And I think it's important that we remember that, that, you know, if, if we have an increase in taxes, it has a real impact on families that live in Gray. The second thing I would mention is, I just finished a few years ago, a 25-year career in healthcare and I was responsible for doing a $6 million budget every year and I, so I know what the challenges are. But what would happen, at least in that particular environment, was that I was pretty much told, this is what you're going to do, Bob. You're going to find a way to cut your budget or you're going to find a way to keep your increases to zero, your net increases. And I would hate it. It would frustrate the heck out of me. How do you expect me to do this? But every year, it seemed, we were able to shave a little bit of money off of something or cut something and, and keep the increases to a minimum. And the point I'm trying to make is that I think it's real important that as leaders in the community, that if you approach this budget with a very rigorous attitude that says, we don't want to increase expenses, and you sort of drive that home throughout the development of this budget and down into the department heads, I think we can do it. You know, I, as a member of the Finance Committee, I've, I've looked at a lot of the transactions, a lot of the, the dollars and cents that we spend on things and frankly, I question some of those things, but I, you know, I look at it and say, who am I to judge as to whether or not this expenditure is okay or not? I can't really do that. But I know our department heads can or should be able to look at every expenditure and say, is this really needed? Is this something we can cut? Is this something that brings value to the town or not? And I think as, as leaders, if you guys approach this from a top-down saying, we're going to hold the line on expenses and kind of drive that home throughout the whole development of this budget, then when we get to the bottom line at the end, it'll come out and it'll be where we hope it would be, which is a, no increase to the taxpayers of Gray. So, I just convey that, that I think it's important that that message be driven from the top-down and then I think we'll be okay. We'll, we'll land where we need to be. So, thanks for the opportunity for input.
Anyone else like to make a comment? Anyone else on the council? I think we'll call the workshop to close then and we'll take a short recess and reconvene for our regular meeting at 7:00 PM.
Yeah, sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, recess is good because I'm going to call Mike because-
Yeah, I think he did.
Oh, there he's got it.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Excuse me, folks. I'm going to call the meeting to order, please. Welcome to the February 4th Gray Town Council regular meeting. This meeting will be held in person and online with a link provided in the agenda header. Residents wishing to participate in the public, in a public hearing or public comment portion of the agenda may do so by clicking in to participate or to call using the number provided during public hearings or a public comment as detailed in the agenda. Just as an FYI, we have changed our process. If we have a workshop and the workshop ends early, depending on how early it is, we may go into our regularly scheduled meeting, but if we do that, we will not hold any public hearings prior to 7:00 PM. So, we may do roll call, we may do minutes, we may do those things, but we will wait at least until seven o'clock every night to do any business that requires or is scheduled public meetings, just so that no one loses an opportunity to do that. It happens very infrequently. I don't think it'll be a big deal, but it is a change, so I just wanted to explain that. Roll call. Anne?
Present.
Krista?
Present.
Michael?
Present.
I heard that, it was pretty-
It works a little bit. I don't know if we were able to turn that-
Levi?
Present.
My name's Dan McGuire, the council chair. I'm present. To my right is our town manager, Michael Foley. If you'll all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item on our agenda is approval of the January 7th, 2025 minutes. Can I have a motion?
Summoned.
A second?
Second.
Second, Levi. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Michael, no. Any objection to unanimous consent? Minutes are accepted. We'll move on next to council communication and start with the report from the chair. For those who may be just joining us now, we did have our first budget workshop meeting just prior to this meeting. Budget season has kicked off. Michael has presented a timeline for this year's budget and that will be available for everybody, along with hopefully some new resources that will make following the budget even that much easier than it has been in years past. As part of that, we also are arranging for the county MMA, GPCOG, I think some other organizations to attend during budget season, organizations that we're affiliated with that provide services to the town, but also come for costs. So, be an opportunity for people to hear and see the value of those expenses in our budget. And then I'm kicking off next meeting, our referral process with a referral to the council about invasive plants and their potential impact. It's a new process that the council has, with the town managers' help, created to streamline and make sure that anybody who wants to make a suggestion for the council to take action on something, that we have a clear, repeatable process. That's the same, whether it be for any of you or any of us. So, I have submitted that one and that will be on our next meeting agenda for discussion. But that's all I have for my report tonight. Next, we'll go on to council correspondence and committee reports. Anne, can we start with you?
Sure. Let's see, resiliency. The Resiliency Committee continues to work on the deliverables we committed to under the Community Action Grant, the townwide watershed management plan, a phosphorus control ordinance, and public education efforts around ways to protect water quality. We welcomed our GPCOG resilience fellow, Abbie Piper, in mid-January and she's diving right in. And Sandy Carter and I met with her as part of her sort of just onboarding process. GPCOG was awarded the Service Provider Vulnerability Assessment Grant, I think I mentioned last fall. So, they'll be working with Gray as well as four other towns in Cumberland County to complete individual town climate vulnerability assessments and at no cost to us. And let's see, on Thursday, Sandy Carter and I will be, and Sandy is the chair of the Resiliency Committee, will be meeting with Chief Elkinich and the Gray Water District to discuss the response to the Gray, to the boil water order last fall, to discuss lessons learned and kind of ways to improve. Sandy also met with Julie Frelick, who lives in Gloucester and is active in the Bling group there, which is a sort of a senior, you know, focused on the needs of seniors. And, and she, and with Chief Elkinich to discuss emergency planning and communication in Gray related to seniors, disabled residents, and those with limited means or transportation. And she reported out on that at our last resiliency meeting. Open space. At the last meeting, we reviewed a large map created by Al Schaefer as a volunteer on a volunteer basis to consider Gray trail network connectivity. The committee will meet with Will Sedlak, who's the new executive director of the Presumskut Regional Land Trust at our next meeting in February, and hope to join forces with them and on land preservation going forward. Royal River Conservation Trust also just hired a new executive director whose name is Chris Franklin and we hope to be able to work with that organization as well. Let's see, the Community Television Advisory Committee had our first quarterly meeting of the year and in January and Kyle, as you may have heard, reported that he was able to hire Chris Daggett, who does IT for Quorum High School and, and is going to be working part-time for Gray and part-time for Gloucester in that arrangement that, that Michael alluded to earlier. That's worked out really well. I mean, last night, it enabled Kyle to come and, and record the zoning workshop that was held in Dry Mills and while Chris handled the planning board meeting here in the council chambers. The Village Transformation Project, because we've shifted into a new phase with the main Department of Transportation now working on the engineering design for the project, the monthly meetings are going to be kind of paused at this point and Denise Clovet will be managing those meetings going forward for the town at least. NDOT will occasionally call meetings around stuff that they need input on. And then the Libby Hill Sidewalk Public Safety Project that's funded with a congressionally-directed spending award. Sandy Carter and I met with Kristen this morning to provide her with more, Kristen Muzinski, our planner, to provide her with more background on this project. As she prepares for a key submission to HUD, the deadline is March 11th. This is a critical next step for being able to kind of finalize the award and, and get permission to officially start the project. So, all cool stuff happening, great stuff happening. People are working hard. And then just in general, I attended the zoning workshop in Dry Mills last night. There was a great turnout there, a lot of great comments. Had a communication from Bill Chapman and then went to the whole council. And I also had a communication from Julie Frelick of Bling and New Gloucester regarding a new opportunity from Age Friendly Maine to train and equip volunteers to install personal assistive devices, like an Alexa or an Echo Dot or something like that, in the homes of, of community members, seniors who are interested. And I shared that with Kyle. So, I think that's it for me.
Great, thank you, Anne. Krista?
Thank you. The Ordinance Advisory Committee met on January 20th to finalize content for the three workshops that are being hosted, one of which is the, was just held last night that Anne mentioned and for Dry Mills in particular. The next one will be held on February 12th to talk about any zoning changes happening in the Libby Hill area. And then we're also going to have a workshop which is focused on zoning changes for the townwide, happening on February 24th at 6:00 here at Town Hall. Just to reiterate, the zoning changes are not new. It's something we've been working on for the last four and a half years since the comprehensive plan was adopted by an overwhelming majority of voters in 2020. So, this alignment for zoning townwide is to make sure that we're following the direction that we receive through that planning initiative in the future land use map that- that we received through that planning initiative in the future land use map that was outlined in that. The Blueberry Festival Committee did meet on January 27th. Unfortunately, I was sick and was unable to attend. They'll be meeting again on February 10th. Just kicking off planning for the festival happening in August. And GPCOG, Greater Portland Council of Governments Executive Committee, met on January 21st, and will be meeting again on February 25th. At the last meeting, there wasn't anything too pressing to mention, but we did have a kind of a brainstorming session about addressing invasive plant species from a regional perspective, since many invasive plants cross town lines. GPCOG was wondering how they might approach that with a regional lens. I think we landed primarily on educational efforts for the time being, but it might be a conversation we're continuing in the future. Things like milfoil and Japanese knotweed and many other invasive plant species that are not just on town property, but on roadsides and lakes that we all share. That was an interesting one. I didn't have any additional correspondence to report out on.
Great. Thanks, Krista. Levi?
All right. The Dry Mills Schoolhouse Committee received a draft copy of the 19th-century lesson plan, which is comprised of seven lessons leading up to the field trip to the schoolhouse, and it includes a timeline for the day at the school. Long-term plan is to coordinate with the wildlife park to have a combined field trip that includes a shorter one-to-two-hour session at the schoolhouse. They're working on developing an interactive quiz board based on an eighth-grade final exam from 1895 of the class originating in Saline, Kansas, which is kind of cool. Next meeting's February 26th at 5:00 p.m. on Teams. The library committee, their infamous storytime is attracting participants from other towns even, so I think that's something that the town should be proud of. Additionally, based on Minerva statistics, the library had one of the highest year-to-year increases in usage. So what that says is the library is attracting even more patrons than our surrounding communities. And another pride point is that despite a 30% increase in the cost of Minerva, the proposed library budget so far is looking to be roughly flat. The next meeting is March 26th. The REC committee, there was a presentation from the Community Connectors. They start in September, serving the aging population of both Gray and Gloucester. One of the big things they offer is the consultation for Medicare savings, and they've been able to help 50 limited means residents so far. Normally, that process looks like an 18-page form that needs to be filled out on the website, and that's a tall task for anyone to complete. They're hoping to expand their services to offer rides in Gray for grocery stores, medical appointments, going to the library, similar kind of things, and looking for support to do that as well. Some of the events coming up for REC, you've got indoor soccer coming for the first, fourth graders. Might consider adding another group if there's more kids on the waitlist. There's an Easter egg hunt that'll be planned. Now that the new basketball courts are complete, there'll be a ribbon-cutting ceremony or grand opening event. And then they're looking to come up with an annual event to further support the scholarships. And the next meeting's March 3rd.
Great. Thank you very much. Michael, do you have any committee or correspondence reports tonight?
Not tonight.
Nope. Okay. Thank you very much. I have a couple of things. The planning board was unable to do its business last month because of a lack of a quorum, so they rescheduled their meeting and met last night. They gave preliminary approval to a subdivision on Mail Road. They discussed a subdivision on Campbell Shore Road. They discussed the new Hanaford extension. If you're not familiar with that, Hanaford is planning a 12,000-square-foot extension to the existing building, as well as a complete remodel of the interior. They'll be adding an additional 42 parking spaces. They will be making other improvements on the site, increasing the size of the generator that they have there. They will not be making any stormwater changes and will be able to continue working with their original DEP and MDOT permits with regards to traffic and stormwater. That process is just beginning, but I believe they hope to begin later on this year. The Zoning Board of Appeals, I was not at their last meeting. Their next meeting will be the 26th of this month, and the next planning board meeting will be March 13th for correspondence. I did receive an invite from Ernie Martin of the Main Department of Transportation. I know others did too for their proposal for the Village Transformation Project. I got an invite to the Public Safety Annual Banquet in April, which I haven't attended before. I'm hoping to get to that one this year. I did have several phone conversations with constituents. Ann shared with us a new EV charging station map of the state, and the town manager also noted in that email that MDOT plans to install EV chargers down at the Park and Ride down by the turnpike. Those are the only additional correspondence and committee notes that I have. Anyone else? Next, we'll move on to our report from the town manager. Michael?
Yes, thank you. I have, since we haven't met for a few weeks, I have a number of stuff I want to update on. Ann mentioned our new resiliency court position with Audrey Piper, our resiliency court member in partnership with the Greater Portland Council of Governments. This is a grant-funded position through the resiliency grant that the resiliency committee worked on. But Audrey, we welcome her to the team. She's a recent graduate of Bowdoin College, and she'd primarily be working with the resiliency committee. The other item I wanted to mention was table talk with the town manager continues at Two Moms Kitchen. We had our second session yesterday. There was some people from the community that attended and was able to talk to them about various community concerns. And we had more at our first one, but hopefully people will be able to attend in the future. Our next one will be held on March 3rd. And our friends at Two Moms wanted to let everyone know, anyone that comes can have a free cup of coffee. So as I mentioned before, we'll continue these for a little bit at the noon time timeframe on the first Monday of the month, and then we'll work in the future to maybe find an evening or a morning time to make it convenient. But I just want to remind everyone that you don't need to attend one of these to have conversations with me, to reach out anytime. I personally answer my office phone and emails and can set up a time for you to come in and talk with me at any time about any issues. And I'm also willing to adjust my schedule if necessary to be able to accommodate other people's schedules. Wanted to touch a little bit, expand on what Ann mentioned about our age-friendly G&G program with the Bling folks. They serve Gray and Gloucester. Levi also mentioned a little bit about them as well, and they partner with our Recreation Department and the Gray Public Library. But they were recently here, using the council chambers, to assemble emergency supply kits that they received a $10,000 grant for from AARP. And so they were assembling these emergency supply kits that had Band-Aids and food and emergency lanterns and radios and things of that nature to help members of our community that need those, should there be a power outage or things of that nature. So we appreciate all the work that they do, and as Levi mentioned, they've helped a lot of folks with Medicare issues, and it's a very valuable program. And that program is all grant-funded through the main council on aging, through the governor's office. And so they're hoping to be able to secure funding to continue this program into the years ahead. Also wanted to let everyone know that myself and our communications and IT director, Kyle Hediniak, visited Fiddlehead School, the first graders, to talk about community helpers. And so we shared with them. Kyle's topic was definitely more entertaining than mine. Mine was a little bit more boring for the first graders, but I did my best to try to make it appealing and fun. So we were helpful with that visit and happy to visit any other, you know, local schools in the community to talk to them about work we do to serve the community.
Were any of them interested in being on a committee?
I know, right?
A planning board, yeah.
By now, Ann had also mentioned the zoning feedback workshops. By now, everyone should have received one of these postcards. The first one for the Dry Mills area was yesterday evening at 6:00 p.m. The next one is for the Libby Hill area, and it's February 12th at 6:00 p.m., and that's at the Gray Gloucester High School. And then there's a townwide one that will be held here on February 24th at 6:00 p.m. So we hope everyone is able to come, and as Krista mentioned, this is something the town's been working on for a number of years, and we're getting to the home stretch, and I talked a little bit about it as part of our budget planning as well. Wanted to just point out the budget review schedule again. As I mentioned in our last workshop, we had a public input session just before this meeting. I hope to deliver the budget to the town council via their council packet and as well to the public, be posted to the public on March 6th. The town council has scheduled budget review workshops for March 11th at 5:30 and March 18th at 5:30, with an April 1st to hold a public hearing on the draft warrants and April 15th to hopefully vote on the draft warrants with the referendum town meeting on June 10th, which is election day. More information about the budget review schedule and more detailed schedule is posted on our website, so be sure to check that out if you'd like more information. We have a number of recent grant partnerships. Ann has mentioned for the last few months, the Community Resilience Partnership, in addition to our resilience fellow. We also were recently notified by GPCOG that they received a grant to be working with us on a housing needs assessment, which was a priority of the council. So when they reached out to us about being able to partner with us on that, we took advantage of that opportunity, as well as a land use ordinance analysis related to housing. So those two items kind of helped to work on the priorities that the council established. So we'll hopefully have some reports in the coming months from those assessments and analysis to be able to share those with the town council for future planning. But we love our partnerships at GPCOG, and we thank them for coming to help us here in the town of Gray. Wanted to let everyone know that the town of Gray was selected through the International City and County Management Association for a fellowship program. It's a partnership with the U.S. Army Civilian Career Management, and it's to help U.S. Armory members who are currently serving about transitioning into civilian life and civilian jobs. And so there's a focus on the public sector and municipal management. And so we'll have a member of the U.S. Army actually coming here from Alaska, Deputy Garrison Commander J. Scott Enlow, and he will be visiting the town of Gray for probably about two weeks. One of the things that they've suggested is that they potentially come to the community when we have a large festival, so I hope to have them come maybe during the Blueberry Festival, if that works for their schedule, to spend some time learning about municipal government and the various departments here in the town, and to have us as well learn about the United States Army and the work that they do to protect and serve our community. And so this is about a year-long connection with this individual, though they'll have a visit between now and September, and hope we'll have them attend a town council meeting as well. And then the whole program will be finalized at the ICMA conference in October that I'll be attending. And so we're looking forward to that program happening here in the town of Gray. And the reason he selected town of Gray, these members of the army researched the different communities, and it was similar to the community that he serves and lives in now, so he wanted to get like an understanding of how, you know, small towns like ours operate. And so we're looking forward to hosting him. Just a couple general updates. Want to remind everyone, our new digital newsletter is out. If you haven't received that, to sign up for that on our website, our communications IT director does an outstanding job to assemble information together for that, and it comes out twice a month. And then I had informed the town council about the federal spending freeze that took place, but it's our understanding that that has been lifted, so wanted to share that with everyone else. And then the chair mentioned some future town council workshops. Just wanted to point out that on February 18th, Main Municipal Association will be joining us to talk about some of the services that they provide from our membership. As part of that workshop, we'll also have some follow-up on the personnel policy updates we had worked on a number of months ago to finalize the feedback from the council. And as we prepare the budget, some of those policy updates will be relevant for future planning, so we'll hope that the council will be okay with those changes and refer those to the whole council if to be acted on. And then on March 4th, before our town council meeting, the Cumberland County Sheriff's Department will be joining us, as well as the Greater Portland Council of Governments, to talk about the services that they provide to the town. And then again, the finance, or the budget review workshops on March 11th and 18th, with county government specifically joining us on the 18th to talk about their budget and its impact on our municipal budget. That's all I had. Mr. Chair, thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Michael. Our next order of business is public comment on non-agenda items. The public's invited to address the council on any item of business not on tonight's agenda. Citizens have a right to and are encouraged to speak during public comment regarding items not on the agenda. All comments and questions during public comments are limited to not more than three minutes per speaker, though we can grant an additional three minutes. Any person who's already addressed the council during public comment on agenda items, there'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting for anyone to speak if they have more to say than the time we have allotted right now. Is there anyone tonight who would like to speak on something not on tonight's agenda? Please come to the podium. State your name and address, please.
I haven't changed. It's still Fair Monroe. I haven't moved. Just about calendar events. I was very surprised to see. I've been in the town a long time, as everybody knows, and I don't ever recall, could be it happened, but I don't ever recall when two major public attending meetings are held on the same night. So it made it very difficult for public to decide which one they wanted to attend to. I think it's up to the council and the staff of the town to watch that calendar very clearly and not put conflicting public attending-type meetings together. I understand about, you know, the regular committee meetings. No, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about last night when you had the public input session, and then you also had the planning board. And the planning board should have been at that input session, which they were, oh, by the way, because the meeting, you know, I mean, it wasn't, this isn't directed at them at all, but they needed to hear the input that was being said as well, because they're dealing with all these zones, and especially in the aqua zone around the lake. So I really, really think, you know, you should pay very close attention to the scheduling, and I would appreciate that, so that we don't have to fight between which meeting we're going to go to and, I mean, okay?
I had the same problem. I wanted to be at that meeting too.
Pardon?
I wanted to be at that meeting too, but I don't think lightning will strike twice. It was, as I said, it was because of a previous planning board meeting that.
Oh, yeah. That's right, because it was in a scheduled planning board night. They meet on Thursdays, and this, you know.
They had a lot of work that was backed up because they didn't have a quorum. They sought to fill that gap as quickly as they could, so it was a conflict, but I don't envision it will happen again or often.
Okay. Well, anyway, I said my piece.
Yep. Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak tonight? Please come to the microphone.
I'm trying to hit the speakers on the microphone because it clicks and just, oh, okay. Judy Semino, Arlington, Co. in Gray. I went to the meeting last night, and I loved the idea of having a little village and everything. I thought it was really kind of a great idea. I didn't like the location. I thought the location was bad because of the lake, and I thought, oh, my God, here we go again, you know, was about the wellheads again. I'm like, how come this keeps coming up? It's like, why are these wellheads so unprotected? It's like, why is it a fight for the district, for the water district, to protect these things? I'm like, here we go again, you know? And I had asked a gentleman that was running it last night. I said, so how does the water district feel about what you're doing about the zoning around the protected wellheads? And they said, well, we didn't really come to much of an agreement. And I'm like, well, here we go again. Why would you even consider anything about jeopardizing the wellheads again? And here we are again on another issue with the wellheads, and I'm just like, why? Why is it that you don't go to the water district first and say, okay, what are your thoughts? What should we do with this? And get their idea and stick with it, and don't waver on the wellheads, because it's just too much jeopardy. It's too much risk. So that's really what I had to say. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Don't see any other additional comments. We'll move on to our next order of business, which is unfinished business. We'll move on to our next order of business, which is unfinished business. To start, I'll take a motion to remove Order 2425-12, the addition of private solar energy systems performance standards to the zoning ordinance from the table.
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Motion and second, Levi? Is there any discussion? There is no discussion on this. Is there any objection to unanimous consent? Seeing none, the item is moved from the table. We'll start with a public hearing on this item. The planning board also had one last night. Notice that the public hearing was published in the Press Herald and posted on the Town of Gray's website as well as posted in the town hall. Is there anyone who would like to comment on the ordinance we're discussing tonight? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address.
Joe Murray, 213 Shaker Road, and I'm one of the trustees of the water board. We're here tonight to ask that the council please reconsider the language in the ordinance that allows for the installation of these solar panels in Wellhead 1. If you remember, the recommendations we made earlier were based on two elements from the guidance we received from the drinking water program. Specifically, they were, the drinking water program recommends keeping Zone 1 of the wellhead protection area free of all structures and appurtenances that are not essential to the public water supply operations. And the second item was, only documented PFAS-free panels should be used within or near the wellhead protection area. Other materials used to create waterproof surfaces on these panels should be avoided unless carefully researched and shown not to contaminate the groundwater. Those are the two elements from a fairly lengthy document that we believe apply in this situation. Council and town staff have done a lot of work on this ordinance and we appreciate how much work it is to just get an ordinance, get it through this whole process. However, at the end of the most recent discussion, the emphasis shifted to PFAS and led to language that spoke to PFAS, but not to the concern about allowing panels in Wellhead 1. It's not just about PFAS, it's the unknown chemical and mineral makeup of these current and future panels, waterproofing compounds and lubricants that are of concern to the drinking water program and to the county, to the district. These panels are subject to damage from destruction from severe storms or large hail, which has happened in other parts of this country, and they may well have little or no maintenance over their entire lifespan. As you know, the Wellhead 1 is the most sensitive zone and it's the last line of defense, the source of the drinking water for our residents and it's the lifeblood of most of the businesses in this town. Decisions regarding what's allowed in this zone should be made with protection of the drinking water source as the primary concern. Allowing solar panels or any other non-essential items in this zone also sets a dangerous precedent for future threats to the source. The Wellhead is already facing a number of serious threats and in that universe, this is not a big one. This is a really small one, but it is another one. And by precedent, it sets the stage for more to follow. District agrees with the need for an ordinance to address private solar installation and supports the concept of having these panels just not in Wellhead 1 and with protections in Wellhead 2 and VT2. We're not asking for a lot, just take three minor little changes to the ordinance as written as the latest addition to provide that protection. You only need to add one item to Section A that says park private solar panels are not allowed in Wellhead 1, modify the existing PFAS statement to apply to installations in Wellhead 2 and VT2 instead of Wellhead 1, and then change the table of allowed uses to reflect 1 and 2 above. That's it. That's all it would take. These three things would change that ordinance from one that adds a threat to the Wellhead to one that protects the Wellhead. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the ordinance tonight? Please come to the microphone.
So I have in front of me a letter from an engineer that the water district hired. And Joe pretty much mentioned most of this stuff, but the, oh, I'm sorry, may I get my glasses? Okay, so what I wanted to read, and this is the basis of my comments, any discussion or proposed changes to the water should be data-based, should be data-based and rooted in an understanding of the hydrologic and hydrologic setting of the Gray Water District. And so along with this ordinance, I don't think I've seen anything that showed that changed, Wellhead 1, that has changed with any supporting documentation from engineers or hydrologists or any of these other specialists in the field that would say that, yes, go ahead and change the zone because. We don't have anything like that unless you have received it and we just don't have that information, I don't know. But we shouldn't be, you know, when they introduced this Wellhead 1 and 2, I'm in Wellhead 2. And I wasn't allowed to tie my driveway because of the impervious surfaces, I got a big driveway. So I couldn't, and I still don't have a tied driveway. And I live with it. I mean, that's the protection of the water supply. And so it's my little contribution and, you know, what is bringing this forward now of all times, it's not a necessary thing, it's not a mandated thing, it's an action that really isn't related to a need or, you know. So I think we need to know in the public, what started this? Why do we have to have this? And I think for the council to go forward, and now we're looking at over by the lake, looking for development in that area, I'm not sure anyone understands about the quality. I served on the McKinsite when we had that big debacle and that was not pretty and people you wouldn't have thought would have any input or it would affect anyone, certain people, and it turned out it affected them. Lives were lost, properties were, had to be given up, values went down, you know, and one little incident is what created that whole thing. And that's why I keep on bringing it back to McKinsite. If you haven't been around when that happened, then you can't understand what, put in some impact in our Wellhead 1, drinking supply can have. So it would be really, unless you can show an emergency reason why you need to change that zone, justification needs to be given or should be given to the public as to why, who came up with the studies and all that to say that that can happen. I don't think that you should be taking any action on this particular thing, except, you know, considering what Joe put in for the ordinance, you know, removing, all we want to do is remove the Wellhead protection, impact on the Wellhead Protection 1. So that's my two cents. And I guess the call is, remember McKinsite, you know, just like the Allen Hall.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to make some additional comments? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. take a motion to approve the first of two public, hang on for a second, let me get back to my agenda, that's the safest way for me to do this. Be it ordained by the town council of the Town of Gray, Maine, and council assembled to amend the Town of Gray zoning ordinance, Chapter 402, to add private solar energy system performance standards, 402.6.12, and associated amendments to allow PFAS-free certified solar panels in Wellhead 1 and to amend the commercial solar energy systems overlay district, 402.8.10, to allow animal grazing. I have a motion.
So moved?
Moved and? Second? I'll second it so that we can have a discussion. Who would like to start? Ann, do you have anything that you want to add to the discussion?
Yeah, I spent some time looking, you know, doing some research on this online, not, you know, I'm by no means an expert on it. I mean, the conclusion that I came to was that it really, there should be no buildings in the Wellhead 1, you know, because there's, there are so many things that are contaminants in those, you know, that are commonly associated with people living in houses, like non-stick cookware, fast food containers, pizza boxes, candy wrappers, microwave popcorn bags, personal care products like shampoo and dental floss, cosmetics, paints and varnishes, stain-resistant carpet, water-resistant apparel, stain-resistant chemicals, cleaning products, electronics, ski wax, soil amendments, pesticides and potting soils, I mean, just to name a list. So, I mean, and it does appear that new, new solar panels are not manufactured with PFAS any longer. It's true that there are other, you know, potential contaminants in the panels, just as there are with the, you know, with all the other things that I just listed. So I don't know, I'm really kind of in a quandary over this, because it almost seems like, you know, we shouldn't, there shouldn't be houses there at all, you know, and the likelihood of the panels causing, you know, considerably more damage is low. Certainly the risk of overall, I mean, I think there's an interest in, you know, in reducing the impact of climate change and using alternative energies to do that. I think that, you know, certainly, climate change has a huge impact on water quality. We're seeing that in our lakes and watersheds now. So, but the reality is we're talking about eight houses in Wellhead 1 and, so, you know, that's not going to have a huge impact on climate change at this point. I don't even know if any of those homeowners are interested at this point in solar panels, so.
Nat, please don't comment. Krista, would you like to?
Yeah, so similar to Ann, I've been reading a lot about PFAS in particular, I know that became the focus, and just thinking about protecting our Wellhead and what that means. And I've come to the conclusion that we have kind of veered off course with the way we're approaching this. Essentially, this was meant to be an aesthetic standards ordinance for people installing residential solar panels across the town and we've kind of veered off on a conversation about the Wellhead. I'm personally uncomfortable with how we framed it in this ordinance, particularly around solar panels in the Wellhead, because I don't think it's really addressing the root of the problem that we're trying, we're trying to get at with conserving water in efficient and equitable way. As Ann mentioned, there's lots of products that can contaminate a Wellhead. PFAS exists in asphalt shingles on a house, in pressurized wood, those are also things that are exposed to weather events, just as solar panels would be. But we also aren't regulating things like pesticides use on people's yards. I think if we would like to address water quality in our Wellhead zones, a better way to do that, rather than focusing on it through this lens of solar panels, would be to improve the zoning rules and regulations for the Wellhead zones and/or instituting a Wellhead overlay district, which we had talked about doing as part of this zoning process. So I'm not comfortable voting for this ordinance the way it's worded currently and I think we should really just kind of refocus how we're approaching it if we want to focus on water quality in the Wellhead. I do still, I am still interested in having aesthetic standards for solar panels, particularly for residential arrays, as we were intending to address with this ordinance originally, which was raised by our code enforcement office. But I think the way we've approached adding things to this, right now, I'm not comfortable with the way it's presented.
Great, thank you. Michael, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
No, I think she just summed it all up. I was kind of having the same feeling, so.
Great, okay, thank you. Levi?
Yeah, like the others, I also went back and tried to educate myself more on it as well. And I came to essentially the same conclusion that really that additional caution, you know, it's a small, especially hearing some of the residents within those districts and that feedback helps too, that, you know, just gives me comfort in potentially giving those kind of restrictions. And you're talking about eight residential parcels, so I think originally I was okay with just the PFAS aspect of it, but going a step further, if there's support for that, I think that's kind of where I've landed now.
Thank you for, you know, reminding us where this started. As so many of our efforts evolve over the course of the conversation, they start out in one spot and someone brings things to the table, brings ideas or concerns to the table and they, they evolve and this one is involved to encompass this one. Personally, I don't think that the solar panels are the biggest threat to the water district, but I don't see a value in adding any more threats. I mean, the main turnpike is the biggest threat to the Wellhead. Just because we have threats to the Wellhead doesn't mean that we should necessarily allow new ones, in my mind. I do agree, I do agree that the rest of the ordinance regarding annual, animal grazing and the commercial overlay districts, solar overlay districts, and the other visible impact concerns for residential figure into this. But Wellhead, you know, and the 1 and 2, that all of the Wellheads are places where people can, residences can put panels. So I don't think that we can just ignore that part of it. I before was in favor of restricting them in Wellhead 1. I understand the concern about the rest of the Wellheads. I would support the ordinance as it currently is and I would say that we can, we're obviously not done. I mean, there's room for, there's other questions around the ordinances for solar panels that we would have to address, but if we, we could keep working on this, I think for a long time and I think we kind of have to decide and our staff's put a lot of effort into getting us to this point. And so I guess what I'm saying is I don't think that we can get the other two main drivers of this, the residential ordinances and the commercial ordinances without addressing this particular issue too. Because if we don't address it now, then it will be allowed until the council addresses it in the future. And we don't have a great track record of coming back around to revisit these things in a timely fashion. So I think we need to resolve this one way or another, myself, if not tonight, as part of this process. So I... So I support this initiative. I would support it, I would support, I would also support extending it to the other wellheads myself. The existence of those panels, are, they are becoming more prevalent, is what I'm understanding. Companies are realizing the negative impact. Obviously, a lot of companies that make solar panels are in it, in part because they want to improve the environment, the idea that their solar panels contain things that could actually negate some of that, isn't something I think the most responsible companies are interested in. And so I, my reading is that more and more companies are going to be making PFAS-free, and other issues too, like lead and some of the other things, that may be in the, some of the other metals that may be in panels. So I think as time goes on, there's going to be more and more opportunities for residents in these zones to get panels that won't in any likelihood contribute to the pollution. So, while it may seem restrictive now, it'll be less restrictive, I think, as time goes on. So I'm personally in favor of making the changes to not just Wellhead One, but to the others, too. So I think what we're going to end up with is, reasonable people assign risks to different things differently, and I think once everyone's had a chance to say their mind, we're just going to put it to a vote and see where we end up. Anyone have anything else they'd like to add?
Just sort of point of information, can, can we amend it at this point without going, starting over, or?
Well, we would need to start the public hearing process over again, if we make any amendments, yeah. So if, for instance, we were to change the ordinance tonight, such that it included no PFAS panels in the other wellheads, too, that would reset it.
Yeah.
Anything, any change to the motion that we have on the table now would, that substantive, would reset the process, which actually, we've already done once, because we got ninety-five percent of the way through when this particular issue came up, and that caused us to revisit it on this one, so. Any other thoughts? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may, if ultimately, if the council votes down this ordinance this evening, there will continue to be no ordinance in place for the solar energy system. So, until the council started discussing this, people could have installed solar energy systems in the wellhead without any conversation. This brought up enacting restrictions for that. So if the, if the council's goal, the council last time had provided us guidance that they just wanted to add that PFAS thing, so we tabled it, sent it back to the planning board. I'm hearing from the consensus of others that basically now they don't want to allow solar in the wellhead zone at all.
I'm, I'm not necessarily, I'm saying that if we would like to address water quality issues in the wellhead, we should address it from a comprehensive perspective, and not just solar panels, through a solar ordinance.
So ultimately, I'm just concerned, if we need to send this back, we have to table it again, and it has to go to the planning board, and then it receives, I think the planning board, the next meeting would be sometime in March.
Yep.
And so then it would come back to the council at a future meeting in March and/or April, with any, with any changes. Otherwise, if, if the council's okay with it as is, you know, we could certainly amend the, this ordinance in the future, so we get an ordinance on the books, but if this motion fails this evening, then we'll be in a different point of reconsideration.
We'll be starting over, yeah, yeah.
If we did that, could we, I mean, get it back amended as quickly, how quickly can we get it back amended, if we just pass this as is, and then, you know, if we were going to go further with it, how quickly can we turn that around?
So if you, if you pass this as is, and provide us direction today about what you want amended, our planning staff can bring that to the planning board at their next meeting for consideration, and then it can come back to the council with a new process.
But I don't.
For those amendments.
I, I don't think we should be amending this ordinance to address water quality.
You've made that clear.
Yeah, I think we should be thinking about it as more of like an overlay district. If we want to address aesthetic standards for solar, then this is, this ordinance shouldn't include things related to the wellhead. That, that's my opinion.
Yep, I understand. Well, what I don't hear from us as a group is any consensus around a, an ordinance that would have the majority vote.
I don't.
So, I mean, that's, I think if we're, if, if we're going to do what you're suggesting, I think we have to have, be able at this point in time to give staff enough direction such that we can be sure that when we get through the process this time round, we're going to be successful, because we don't want to waste their, their time. Michael, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I think we should just put it to a vote.
We can, if we, if this is voted down tonight, it would, I was going to say.
Yeah, so it's, so if this is voted down tonight, and the council wants to have any sort of ordinance like this, somebody can make a motion to reconsider it at the next meeting.
Yes.
And then they can provide any suggested amendment suggestions, table it back to the planning board to consider. I think voting it down today just lengthens the process. So if there's a consensus amongst the council to make a change, and then I think the best thing to do would be to propose the changes today, table it, and have it returned to the planning board. Otherwise, I think it just muddies the waters a little bit to, to just vote it down today, to then have to have it reconsidered at a future meeting.
I don't disagree whatsoever. It's one of the reasons why they compare this process to making sausage. But what I'm not hearing, and I'm looking for help from everybody else, is I'm not hearing an idea that has the support of at least three counselors.
I mean, I'd be willing to, to, you know, say that we, that panels are not allowed in Wellhead One, but it sounds like we would need to, I don't think that's.
Which is the motion on the table.
Which is the motion, so I, I'm comfortable with that, and moving ahead with it on this base, on that basis. And, and with the, you know, also with the proviso that the, Wellhead Two, that they would have to be certified to be, you know, non-PFAS carrying.
That would require us to reset the process.
Oh, that's, okay, that's the part that would be at, well, I, then I'm comfortable.
Prohibiting it in Wellhead One would also, because that wasn't.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
That wasn't in the, in the proposal.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
It was for, to be PFAS-free.
Right, that's, that's.
So, but if she wants to propose to amend it to be prohibited in Wellhead One, which is what the folks from the.
But that's what PFAS-free.
No prohibited solar panels.
Prohibited solar panels.
Period, yeah, 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 yeah.
I would support that as well.
You would support prohibiting solar panels in one?
And then extending the PFAS to two.
Yeah, I would as well.
Yeah, to two.
Well, let's do a straw poll here. Michael, would you support that? You would support that?
Yes.
Anne, would you support that?
Yes.
So, no, no solar panels in Wellhead One, and PFAS-free panels in the other wellheads.
Yeah.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
Well, hang on a second. There wasn't a motion.
We're doing a straw poll, yeah.
Don't get ahead of me, please.
It could be a motion.
Krista, it could be a motion.
I, I don't support that process.
Okay. I would support that particular process. So, that does require a reset, but it does sound like we have something that we will get to the end of, the, the next time we go through. So we have a motion on the floor. Anne, I think.
Yeah, I think I made the visual motion, yeah, so.
Do you want to make an amendment?
Yeah.
Or do we table, do we?
I think it's best to take an amendment, a motion to amend, vote on that, and then vote to table it with the direction that has to go back to the planning board.
That's what I thought, okay.
Okay. So yes, I would propose an amendment that panels not be allowed in Wellhead One, and that in Wellhead Two, they would need to be certified PFAS-free.
Okay.
I'd second that.
I need to second that. I'll now take a motion.
If I, if I may ask, just before, would the folks at the Water District be able to come up and just confirm that that's something that they're okay with?
That's, that's what we're asking for.
Yeah.
Can you come to the microphone, please, because no one can hear you otherwise, and that's a great idea, thank you, Michael. Let's make sure we're all on the same train.
Yes, that's what we're asking for, that's what the drinking water program recommends, not in Wellhead One, and just with, with cautions, PFAS precautions, in Wellhead Two and BT Two, that's it, it's as simple as that.
So it's Wellhead Two and BT Two?
That's what I wanted to confirm, because I remember you mentioned another location.
Oh, BT, yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot to BT. So can I amend my amendment to include?
No, we're not there yet, so don't worry about it.
All right, so I'm, I'm just going to add BT.
So the motion.
PFAS-free and BT as well.
So the motion is that panels will not be allowed in Wellhead One, and, and only PFAS-free panels will be allowed in Wellhead Two and BT Two.
Yes, that's correct.
May I make a comment?
In a minute, once we have, do you second that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Yep, now you can. I'm just trying to do it the right way.
Yeah, no, I, if we go forward with this approach, these zoning districts are on the table to be changing, because we're going through a rezoning process.
Yeah.
And when we were discussing that, as I mentioned a minute ago, a few months back, what that might look like for the wellhead, we were talking about doing an overlay district that was more stringent for water quality issues. We're going to have to revisit this again when we go through the, approving those processes after all the public input sessions, so I would just like to put a pin in it for later to discuss this overlay district for the new zoning.
Like you said, I think it's, it's a, it's a definite as a part of that discussion anyways, so, yeah. So, we have a motion to table.
No motion to amend.
But we just got that.
We have to vote on that.
Thank you, I did forget to do that. All right, we'll do roll call on this particular one. So the motion as amended, Anne.
Yes.
Krista.
No.
Levi.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
And Michael's a yes, if you couldn't hear that, and I'm also a yes, so the motion passes. And they now take a motion to table it.
Make that motion to table it.
And the second.
Second.
Motion Anne, second Levi, is there any, I don't know, can we discuss?
No discussion, but just to confirm that tabling is to return it to the planning board with the suggested amendments.
Right.
Because we're tabling it, yes, it will require us to go through the public hearing process again, and the planning board starts that. All right, we'll go to vote. Levi.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Anne.
Yes.
Krista.
We're just voting to table it.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you from the lobby, so we appreciate all of you.
There is a way from here to there. It is sometimes a very tortured way.
Still complicated sometimes, yeah.
But we do get from here to there. All right, the next motion of, pardon me, let's see, we have one more order here.
There's two more.
Yes, there's two more. That was all we had for unfinished business, though. Our next order of new business is Order 2425-15, Personal Property and Real Estate Writeoffs. Be it ordered that the Gray Town Council hereby approves the attached list of personal property accounts and real estate account number 608, be written off as recommended by the assessor. Do I have a motion?
So moved?
Motion Anne, second.
Second.
Second Krista. Do you want to introduce this, or was?
We can, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to have more to do.
Yes, if Lauren wants to come up, yeah, this is a, a process that the council has done in the past.
Yeah, doesn't come up often.
But it doesn't come up too often, but Lauren's been trying to be diligent with the accounts that we have that don't exist anymore, so Lauren, if you want to introduce.
Yes, hi, I'm Lauren Asselin, I'm the assessor for the Town of Gray. You will find in your handouts, a list of accounts that I'm recommending to be written off, also reference to Maine State statute Title 36, Section 841, Subsection 3, and that states specifically, if after two years from the date of assessment, a collector is satisfied that a tax upon real or personal property committed to him for collection cannot be collected by reason of death, absence, poverty, insolvency, bankruptcy, or other inability of the person assessed to pay, he shall notify the municipal officers thereof in writing under oath stating the reason why that tax cannot be collected. The municipal officers, after due inquiry, may abate that tax or, and tax or any part thereof. So, basically what that states is that both personal property and real estate accounts can fall under this statute, where if for some reason, there is a belief that there is going to be no way to collect them, in this case, there's only one real estate account, the rest are personal property, and in the case of the personal property accounts, the, the accounts are either closed, out of business, sold to other owners, the owners have been deceased, or, you know, to that, such as, such as those instances. There really is no way to collect these taxes, or nobody to collect them from. So it makes sense to just write them off as uncollectible, and get them off of our books. In the case of the real estate account, that property, the heirs of Miss True were kind enough to donate that property to the Town of Gray, it's part of the Libby Hill project, so those taxes would be something that we would not collect also. That's basically what I have to present, but does anybody have any questions?
No, it's like.
Krista does.
Oh, I'm sorry, Krista, go ahead.
I noticed that some of these properties are properties that are still operating in Gray, so I'm just curious, were they, like you mentioned, some of them have been sold, is that, is that the case with, like, Lake Region Chimney Service, and Sheer Bliss Salon, I'm just curious.
So Sheer Bliss Salon was sold to a new owner.
Okay.
So we're, there's.
So this is tax on the owner.
The new owner would not be responsible for the previous owners. What was the other one that you mentioned?
Lake Region Chimney Service.
So Lake Region Chimney Service, we have as being out of business.
Oh, really? They just repaired our chimney?
Did they?
Yes, they did, anyway, but.
Are they in another?
Is it another owner, maybe, or?
I don't know, it was, you know, a gentleman who came to clean our chimneys, so I didn't ask him that, but.
Oh, interesting.
But, but like Coca-Cola bottling company, it's just a doll, it's like nine cents, but I'm just wondering.
So they, they are still in business, but that Coca-Cola, Coca-Cola bottling is from, we'll just write off that nine cents, I mean, yeah. Yeah, that one doesn't fall under either of those categories, I failed, I forgot that that little one was on there.
That's okay, I just, I don't know, I guess I just was, because some of these stood out for me as, like, still in business, I, I was just curious, but.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead, Anne.
Some of these amounts are really small, and I, I just wondered if you could speak to that, Lauren, just kind of like, six dollars and three cents, I mean, and, and I, like, year after year, Atlantic Real Estate had, you know, under ten dollars of, of tax owed, and I'm just wondering, how could, how does that happen?
Because when they report, they report just the items they have for their business, and sometimes they're minimal. Yeah, sometimes it's just a home office that has a computer and a printer, and a desk, and a chair, that's it. So, the, the value of those items is small enough, and it only creates that amount of taxes.
Okay, so that's the, the sole amount of tax that they owed, and then, and, and they just declined to pay it.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
If I may, Mr. Chair. The personal property is, it's a very challenging taxation topic for the state of Maine, there's exemption things, and things of that nature, that not everybody qualifies or applies for in a timely manner, and so these are accounts that, like Lauren said, are very small items, you know, a desk, a chair, they were assessed for, and they, they don't exist anymore. One of the things that some other communities have done, that we could consider to do in the future, is, it's not anything that our assessing office has the staff to do, but we could conduct a personal property audit, which would involve sending people to each personal property account, and to conduct an audit and an assessment of what there is for personal property. And so, a lot of it is businesses, so they would go in and they would see, okay, do you actually have the ten computers that you reported to us, or the, the hundred thousand dollar piece of machinery, or do you have two? And, you know, so, some. And, you know, so some communities have done that recently, some larger communities, but it's something that would come with a cost associated with it. So it's something that we could explore to do that. It has an opportunity to potentially realize new revenue if, if we're able to discover, you know, new personal property, but it's, it's a, right now, personal property is an honor system. People report that to the assessor's office every, annually, and then the assessment is, is levied on that. And it is, for the personal property, it's just a total of $47,364, and it's over fiscal years dating, uh-
Going back to 2005.
Yeah, some of them are 2005. So now that these accounts will be closed, we won't assess them anymore, and as I pointed out, we hope to be able to monitor these accounts better in the future and avoid uncollected accounts like this.
And to speak about your, I will check that one before we actually write it off.
Well, I didn't mean to tattle on it, but-
No, no, it's, I'm gonna tell them, Krista. No, I will check, though, because it is important to note, you know, that if that's still-
I just, I just Google them, his website's operating.
Okay, well, then, yeah, I will, I will check into that before we write that off. For some reason, that showed up as being-
They weren't, they weren't large amounts. I, I, it was just more that, I noticed that was when I recognized this being a business.
No, that's fine, I don't mind at all, I appreciate the heads up.
Aramark was on there, too, it was just so, but, um-
Levi, did you have any comments?
Yeah, I actually-
Excuse me, sorry, we can't have a, that kind of a conversation.
I, I actually do have another question. The number 150, Johnny Holmes Excavation, so from 2005 to 2017, they don't pay, and, and it's, you know, hundreds of dollars every year, and then in, in 2018, the, the name gets changed slightly to JM Holmes Excavating, and, and they continue not paying until this year, when they're, we're gonna, we're apparently gonna write all of this off, and I, so is that a business that's operational? Did, did they transfer ownership and stuff?
Actually, if, I can actually speak to that.
Oh, okay.
I can't speak to the name change. I, I don't want to share too much. I know that in this particular case, the, the, the person who owned the business died, and-
Okay.
And left behind a couple of young kids. I can't speak to the name change. What, the, the comment that I was going to make is I appreciate the fact that we'll pay attention to this list and, and not have, you know, it get 20 years out before we rectify it one way or another. I think that, that piece is important, and I think it's just, again, it's, it speaks to the cleanup and the work that the staff is doing together to get all of the different portions of our financial house in order. But I, that particular one, I just happen to have that information about.
Right, I just, that, that was one that had dragged on for a number of years, and so, yeah, I think that having a system in place where we either decided, you know-
I think this is, you know, in that, I don't want to, like, again, I don't want to call too much attention to it, but when you have something like that happen, and, and then people move away or become transient, sometimes the last thing they're worried about is addressing those particular issues, given what's happened in the family, so I mean, that's obviously not the case with all of this. But it's easy for me to understand how this stuff kind of gets away from you. And to Michael's comment earlier, you know, I'm, I'm not sure what the cost of that would be, you know? I don't want to spend $10 to collect $5.
Yeah, right, right.
That kind of thing. So at, at some point in time, I think you just cut your losses and you move on, and you monitor it, and you try and stay on top of it. And your comments early this evening about, you know, being in a position to interact with these people earlier, see if you can arrange some kind of a way to do payments, we have done that in the past with people who have struggled to pay their taxes, so I'm glad to hear that, too. But I don't have any additional questions beyond those comments. Uh, Michael, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, I just had a couple of concerns, that kind of to go along with what you just mentioned, was the, I think we needed definitely do a better job, especially looking through the list, that some of these went on for years and years, and why did we let it go on so long? And then a couple of them I know are still local to the area. You mentioned one earlier, that they sold the business, but they still live locally. Is there, have we, have we reasonably tried to reach out? And, and, you know, and, and one of them in particular was, was quite a bit of money, you know? Have we done due diligence? Because I, I know of at least one, you know, I, they have the ability to pay.
Yep, one, Mike, if, were people able to hear that? Okay, good, all right, your voice is pretty soft, but people were able to hear you, so that's good. Do you want to speak to that?
I'll just speak to the fact that a lot, the, we, we, this list is compiled because we get return notices of tax bills that we sent, we send certified things that don't get opened and picked up. So the, personal property is a very difficult property tax to collect, because you're not, there's no, nothing to lean, like we do with real estate. Real estate taxes, we are guaranteed to collect those, because if they don't pay the property taxes, the town can keep the property. There's new laws about how the town can do that and how they dispose of that, but at the end of the day, the town will always get its money in real estate property taxes. Personal property taxes is very difficult. Again, it's an honor system, both on reporting and, 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 you know, essentially paying when it's not, you know, the business doesn't continue, or things of that nature. It's also if a business, again, goes out of business or moves, they don't, if they don't report change of address, change of information, it's hard for the town to be able to, to chase people around. So I think, I, I haven't been here for all this time, and so, I've been here for a year, and so I think working with finance staff and assessing staff will work to try to limit these from happening in the future, and it's something that a lot of municipalities, municipalities don't tackle extensively, and so we'll, I'll work with everyone to ensure that this is tackled and not brought up on a regular basis.
Mike, and Michael, if you've got some information there, you can send Michael Foley-
Send us, yeah.
Michael, send Michael an email with that information, that would be good for them to have.
Absolutely, guy. I just, um, yeah, a couple of these, I know they're still local, and there's no reason why they can't be paying these, you know? I still have to pay my taxes.
Very good. Anyone else have any comments before we go to a vote? All right, Levi?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Michael?
No.
No, and I'm a yes. The motion passes.
Thanks, Lauren.
Thanks, Lauren.
Thank you, Lauren, very much. The next order of business, uh, is this, this is new business, okay. So we, this is a public hearing?
Yeah, it also requires a public hearing.
Okay, so the order is 2425-14, an amendment to table 402.5.3 of the zoning ordinance. This requires a public hearing. This is to amend the permitted use and conditions table to allow churches as a conditional use in the commercial and business transitional, or BT1 zoning districts. And as a preference to the public hearing that we have to have, because we have to have a public hearing when we change these ordinances, literally a church came and was looking to locate in a commercial district where our zoning ordinance is, I couldn't have told you this, did not allow that use. Clearly, there's statute that prevents us from putting limits on religious facilities like that outright, without any discussion whatsoever. And so what we're simply doing is changing the permitted uses and, and table such that it allows churches to be conditional uses in all the zones. It's pretty straightforward, but it does require a public hearing, so if there is someone here tonight who would like to speak to this, now's your opportunity. You have to come to the microphone. Don't forget your glasses.
I don't need them for this.
Just trying to save you a trip.
Thank you, anytime.
So I, I, I just had a question on the, you said the BT district?
Commercial and BT1, yes.
Commercial. So, I mean, right on Route 100, that's BT, unless there's a division that changed, you know, there's a church there.
Yeah.
So was that not permitted, or, because that's always been there, I mean?
Well, I think it was there before the district was created, before BT1 was created. This was a case of someone, a new facility going into a commercial zone, that's when the research was done, and we found out that we were, we weren't in compliance.
Okay, I, that just confused me, because I know that, you know, there are churches, and there was a church up the street, or Cole Farms, you know?
Yeah.
And that's BT, I know that's BT, so, and, okay, well, yeah.
This is, this one's pretty straightforward. It won't be like the solar-
We have one on every corner, we have a church on every corner now, and now we're gonna have one in between. It's great.
Thank you.
It's great.
If there's no other, do you want to, during public comment?
Yeah, let me just add an item as part of the public hearing. Essentially, the only reason why those zoning districts are identified is we've been advised by legal counsel that churches need to be allowed in all zones, and so those are the zones that it wasn't included. Learning some of the past history, I guess there was some conversation when these zoning districts were established, that folks didn't, were concerned about churches potentially being located in certain zones in the past, and so in this case, it allows them as a conditional use. If somebody wants to open a church, they do need to make application to the planning board for that use, and address parking and traffic concerns, and all that type of stuff. So they need to be allowed to have happen, and the conditional use, use allows them to, to be reviewed, so that way people aren't just opening up churches anywhere haphazardly with no review at all. And so ultimately, that's what we are advised by legal counsel, that we need to add that, so we're adding that to the uses. Otherwise, we, the town could be opened up to a, a federal lawsuit in violation of a certain statute that referenced churches.
Which is something we can do without. Anyone else wish to make a comment?
The pla, our town planner would like to just make one point of clarification, if she might.
Certainly, Kristin.
Kristin Muszinski, staff, just wanted to clarify, the, the law did advise that we could still keep the prohibition on churches in wellhead one, because public assembly is not permitted, any, no assembly use is permitted in wellhead one. So that, that piece is still in place as, as it's proposed to you tonight, so I just wanted to clarify that.
And that's because it's, it's across the board, it's everywhere.
Across the board, correct, yeah. And, and these other two that are before you tonight, their public assembly for that type of use is allowed, a different type of public assembly?
Yeah.
So it's not even-
Great, thank you for clarifying that. I depend on you for the, those details. Any other comments? I'll close the public hearing then, and take a motion to approve the first of two readings, so, wait a second, hang on. Be ordained by the town council of the town of Gray, Maine, and the town council assembled to amend table 402.5.3, the table of permitted uses and conditional permitted uses in the town of Gray zoning ordinance, to add an allowance for churches as a conditional use in the commercial and business transitional zone one districts. Have a motion.
So-
Moved Krista, second Ann. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to vote. Ann?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Michael? And I'm also a yes, that was unanimous. We have arrived at our second opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak about something not on the agenda? Seeing none, we have no referrals, or new referrals. We will be going into an executive session, um, under MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, 405.6C, to discuss real estate matters, and MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, 405.6A, to discuss personnel matters. The session will include the town council and the town manager. No decisions will be made following the executive session, and the council will adjourn following that session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion Krista, second. Levi? Any objection to unanimous consent? Seeing none, the motion passes. We will enter into executive session.
Don't forget to take your mics off.
Yes, before I walk away, I've done that before.